All right, our mic's live. We'll get started here momentarily. We still have a number of people loading into the Zoom app. So we will start here another minute or two. Everybody, thank you for joining the ACA Small Business Bootcamp and Resource Collective for this Wednesday, January 6th, for the special session on PPP. We're excited to have everybody here. I am Robert Theobald, Small Business Ombudsman and Vice President of Small Business Services, Arizona Commerce Authority. We'd like to start this bootcamp by recognizing and thanking all of our community partners. We cannot do these bootcamp sessions without their help and support. You can see we got two, two slides worth. There's over ninety community partners that have been helping with the bootcamps. So we appreciate all of their help and expertise. This Small Business Bootcamp and Resource Collective is designed to help small businesses work through the COVID crisis and return stronger than ever. As you saw in those previous slides with all of our community partners, it is a statewide initiative supported by them, and they bring great insight and expertise to these sessions. It is a bootcamp. It's Tuesdays and Thursdays every week, and then we do special sessions like today on Wednesdays as needed. And you can find all of our bootcamp sessions, both our current ones, we record all of these, and they're available after the session later on today. It'll be available on our website. In all the previous sessions, over a hundred and ten sessions are available on our website. Now, we've recorded all of them from last year, and they're down at the bottom of the page under the archive. You can access the different sessions or go back and review the materials, watch the videos, and download the PowerPoints or a part of them. So it's a great resource on our website. Additionally, on our website, you can find our Resource Collective. And this is a website set up to how the tools and resources that our community partners have provided. A lot of great information there. This is just a sample of some of the guides and resources that are available. Reopen Arizona Restaurant Guide, Recovery Readiness for Retail, Safe Retail, Barber Shops and Cosmetologists, Construction Manufacturing, Return to Workplace. There's, there's a number of great things on that Resource Collective, so please check it out. Some quick updates. You'll hear a little bit about this today, but just to want to let everybody know the EIDL program, besides the PPP, the EIDL program is reopened, and there's some great news around that. Also part of the stimulus package that we won't necessarily get into today, but a great part of it is the shuttered venue operator grant program. And we have some information on our website about that and will link to the SBAs as we get more information from the SBA on that program. Additionally, statewide is the safest outside restaurant assistance program, and yesterday the governor announced additional funding for a program and an extension of the application dates. So there's an additional $2 million for that program, and the application period has been extended until March. So that's a great program to help all our restaurants expand their premises and serve more customers. Also, if you live in Globe or you know someone that lives in Globe, they have a Small Business Relief Fund that just opened up on Monday, and that is runs for one week. So January 4th to January 10th is the application period for that grant. So again, if you know somebody in Globe or you are from Globe, you may want to look at that. The information is on Local First Arizona's website. Also, for just for general business resources for COVID-19, we have our COVID-19 Arizona Business Resource Page. You can find guidance, financial information, and many other things to keep that updated as often as we have new information come down. It is a great resource for all businesses in Arizona. We also like to spend a little bit of time here as we kick off to share information about the ACA's programs to help support small businesses. We have our Small Business Services, and we help navigate with the SBA, work with the Small Business Development Centers. We can help with local banking contacts, and we're sharing the latest developments when it comes to COVID and business, small business opportunities related to COVID. Our Workforce Division can help employers look into hire or train or upskill their employees. They have a lot of great programs to help support that. And then our Arizona MEP, our Manufacturing Extension Partnership, can provide various different services for manufacturers to help support them through this period. They are a nationally recognized program and excellent what they do. Additionally, a lot of people are looking to start side gigs or start a new business, and we have our Small Business Checklist. It's an online interactive resource to help with licensing, registration, compliance, information at all the local, state, and federal levels. You can find that at azcommerce.com forward slash smallbiz, B-I-Z. We also wanted to do a quick reminder of the arizona together.org website, it's the state's COVID-19 information and resource page. A lot of great information there. So our sessions this week, yesterday, we had a great session of building your mindset for a successful 2021. It was a really good session with Mark Kirsten from Santa Training. And Thursday, we will have a great session on creating a successful 2021 business plan hosted by the North Phoenix Chamber of Commerce. For small businesses, if you haven't made your plan on how you're going to attack 2021, this will be a great session to attend. If you've been doing the same thing over and over again throughout 2020, trying to make, you know, adjustments, I recommend you attend this session to see how we can make 2021 a great year for you. So we're excited today to have Amber Cordova, the Director of Business Education Consulting Services at Prestamo CDFI. Amber's been a great partner of ours throughout the bootcamp. She's, she's done a number of these. She is an expert on the PPP and the programs. When the PPP was wrapping up last time, throughout that whole process, I talked to Amber quite a bit, and they were extremely helpful in helping clients that were in need and answering questions. And so we are grateful to have her with us. We also have with us today Carrie Anne Todd from Beach Fleishman. She's also been one of our excellent PPP experts that's been on many bootcamp sessions, and she's with us today to help when we get to the Q and A session. But I do want to say that as Amber goes through her presentation, please hold off on your questions until the end. She will answer many of them. But we will take some time to do some Q and A today, and if needed, we will do some additional PPP bootcamp sessions in the near future. So Amber, I'm gonna go ahead and turn the time over to you and let you get started.
Wonderful. Good morning, everybody. Thank you so much for having me. I am happy to be here and talk about what has become my favorite subject, the PPP. As Robert mentioned, I've done a lot of research and put together slides to try to answer as many questions in advance as possible. So if you can hold your questions to the end, I'll probably be able to answer your question unless yours is really specific. But we will do Q and A at the end, and if there's some lingering questions, we can also get back to you with those as well. I'm from Prestamo CDFI. We're a division of Chitano's Porlecausa, which is a fifty-plus-year nonprofit organization here in Arizona and Nevada. I just want to point out that all of the information that I'm going to share with you today is intended to be informational only. It shouldn't be considered legal or professional financial advice. This is all information that's been taken from the SBA or the Republican Small Business Rules Committee in the current text of the COVID Relief Bill. So make sure as you're making any decisions that you talk with your financial advisor, your CPA, your accountant. So for today's discussion, we're going to quickly go over the existing PPP one rules. That's for the first round of PPP. We'll talk about the updates under this new legislation. I'll recap important takeaways, recap the existing, oh, that's a duplicate there, other stimulus provisions around the idle, and we'll open up the Q and A session. So for those of you that received a PPP the first round, or for those that haven't, the rules are pretty much the same for the first round that they, they were before. For-profit and 501(c)(3) businesses, those are your nonprofit businesses or organizations are eligible to get a PPP loan. Employees have to be principal residences, their principal residence has to be in the United States. So even if you're an owner and you don't live in Arizona or the United States, but your employees do, they are eligible to receive funding through their payroll wages. And then small businesses have to have five hundred or fewer employees. If you're in accommodation or food service, it has to be under three hundred per location if you have multiple locations. Funds you can use for W-2 wages, owner compensation replacement if you are self-employed, health insurance, and state payroll taxes. So that's only going to be unemployment insurance. It's not going to be the Arizona withholdings. And then the other forty percent can go to eligible expenses, and that's going to include rent, utilities, and mortgage or small business loan interest. And then the terms of this PPP loan are two and a half times the average monthly payroll amount, up to the first one hundred thousand in wages per employee that you have. And then there's an eight or twenty-four-week covered period depending on when you applied and what was best for you. So this is just a recap of the existing PPP as it happened the first time. The intent of this program is and has always been to provide forgivable loans to small businesses that have been impacted by COVID-19, to encourage them to continue to repay their W-2 employees. And we're not talking about 1099 contractors. If you pay somebody when you don't withhold taxes, they're a 1099 contractor, you give them the 1099 at the end of the year, they file their own Schedule C as a self-employed business owner, and they are eligible to apply for their own PPP. So your, your eligibility is going to be based off of W-2 wages only or your own self-employment income. You also, there's a necessity test that is saying that because of the economy, without getting access to the PPP program, your business wouldn't be able to survive. And again, individuals who will receive 1099s that are self-employed and file a 1040 Schedule C, if you have a net positive income on line thirty-one of your taxes, you are eligible to receive that owner compensation replacement. Now, when we talk about necessity, if your business has been profitable or at least break even, and you expect to survive without PPP assistance, then you may not be able to justify that you had a necessity in taking the PPP loan. So this is something that you would probably want to speak with your CPA or an attorney about. The SBA is not going to question any loans that are under $2 million, but just remember that all PPP loans, no matter how small, our public knowledge and anybody can go on and see if you got a PPP loan. So a competitor or a former employee that might have been disgruntled could go on, see if you got a PPP loan, and could report you to the IRS or to another authority saying that you took the PPP loan when it wasn't necessary for your business. So this is something that you want to think about. There's a lot of articles and a lot of opinions out on the internet about this. So I know you all have a lot of burning questions, and I'm just going to jump into, can I get a second PPP loan? So yes, if you were eligible the first time around and you received a PPP loan, and you can meet certain conditions, you are eligible to get a second PPP loan, and you do not have to have already applied or received forgiveness in order to be eligible to apply for the second PPP loan. So that's really nice. If you didn't get a PPP the first time around, then you are eligible to receive a PPP for the first time if you meet the requirements. Right now, even though the bill has been signed into law, the program is not currently open. We do not know when that's going to happen. We're waiting for SBA guidance and hoping that it will come this week. But it was signed into law, and we're just waiting for the SBA to issue the guidance. They have to create new applications, and they have to make some changes to the existing structure. We are a PPP lender, but you can also go on to the SBA website and find a lender near you, and we'll talk a little bit more about that a little bit later. So in addition to the original expenditures that you could use it for in the past, which was going to be your rent or lease, utilities, and that would include your internet, your phone, cellphone, and mortgage interest or interest on any small business loan or fixed loan that you had. You can also now use that forty percent of additional eligible expenses for software that your businesses need to go online, cloud computing, human resources and accounting needs. So those are some additional eligible expenses. If you had any property damage that wasn't covered by insurance due to 2020 public disturbances, those are also eligible expenses. And then any PPE equipment or adaptive instruments that you need to add or any changes that you needed to make or you need to make to your establishment for social distancing or health compliance, those are also going to be eligible expenses under this new legislation. Some other really cool things that happened that I don't think most of us were expecting. Originally, the idle advance, if you applied for an idle loan and you got that $1,000 per employee advance, your forgiveness amount on your PPP loan would have been reduced by that amount. So they've done away with that, and you're no longer going to have your forgiveness reduced by the amount of your idle advance. Another really big thing, and maybe Carrie Anne can talk about this when we're in the Q and A section, but originally, the IRS deductions for any expenditures that you used for your PPP loan were not going to be taken as deductions on your tax return. So the PPP is not considered income, but you weren't going to be able to use the expenses as deductions, but now you're able to. Accommodations and food service businesses, so that's any industry that has an NAICS code that starts with a seven-two. And if you don't know what an NAICS code is, you can go to your tax return, and in the top section, it'll tell you what you've applied for or used in the past. But we're talking specifically about accommodation and food service businesses. So that's restaurants, bars, hotels, bed and breakfasts. Those, those industries are all going to be eligible to get three and a half times their eligible payroll as opposed to just the two and a half that they were the first time around or that everyone else is eligible for. And then there's been some clarification that group benefits is going to include your health, your retirement accounts, but it's also going to include any group life, disability, vision, or dental insurance. That's the employer portion. So remember that when you're, you're applying and using your funds, that that's only for your employer portion. So in order to get a second draw alone, that's what it's being called, is the second draw. You have to have been in operation, actually operating your business in February, February fifteenth, 2020. This is the same rule that exists for the first PPP. They have decreased the number of employees from five hundred down to three hundred, and it's no more than three hundred per location if you have multiple locations, if you're a larger, maybe a food or accommodation. And you have to be able to demonstrate a twenty-five percent decrease in at least one quarter of 2020 compared to the same quarter of 2019. So you are going to want to look at your profit and loss statements. If you don't do profit and loss statements, you're going to probably want to get those prepared sooner rather than later. Or you can also take your business bank statements, add everything up per quarter, and we're talking January, February, March, April, May, June, July, August, September, October, November, December. And in that three-month, one-quarter period, your 2020 gross revenue, gross receipts, gross sales, whatever you call it, needs to be reduced, reduction by at least twenty-five percent based on that same quarter in 2019 in order to be eligible for this second draw loan. If you did not get a PPP the first round, you will be able to apply, and you don't have to show that reduction. And then the same safe harbor rules that existed the first round, that if your business was impacted and not able to operate at full capacity, you don't have to meet the FTE requirements. So the same safe harbor rules exist for the second draw as they did for the first draw. The loan terms are going to be pretty much the same. A loan amount is going to be two and a half times the average monthly payroll costs in the one year prior to the loan or calendar year. At this point, you are able to use the 2019 numbers. So what your first loan was based on, you can use that same information at this point unless the SBA issues other guidance that you would have to use 2020. However, if the program opened up tomorrow, the majority of people aren't going to have all of your payroll data and information filed, nor your taxes filed. So it's two and a half times the average monthly payroll cost unless you fall into that seven-two NAICS category, which is food service or accommodations, then you're eligible for three and a half, three and a half times your monthly payroll. And then seasonal businesses can calculate based on any twelve-week period between February fifteenth, 2019, and February fifteenth, 2020. They've also expanded this to churches and 501(c)(6) are now eligible as long as they don't exceed a certain amount of lobbying activity, and I believe it's either ten or fifteen percent in lobbying. So those are membership organizations. And then the use of funds requirements is the same. Sixty percent needs to be used for payroll costs, and the other forty percent can be used for other eligible expenses. So loan forgiveness, full forgiveness is available just like it was the first time around. Or if this is your first PPP, you are eligible for full forgiveness on your loan if you use sixty percent for payroll costs. And again, that payroll is going to be the full wages up to the equivalent of $100,000 annualized. The employer portion of unemployment tax, the employer portion of unemployment for the state as well, and that's going to be any of the group health or retirement. And then the other eligible expenses are, again, the, the rent, the utilities, cloud computing, HR, and any property damage. Any amount that's not forgiven, there will be a ten-month deferral and a five-year repayment with one percent interest. There's supposed to be a simplified process, and we're not sure because we haven't received the guidance yet from the SBA. If that simplified means that there's going to be a simpler forgiveness application, or if there's going to be automatic forgiveness under 150,000. So we're, we're waiting to hear that for sure. Hopefully, it's automatic forgiveness, but right now, the process is relatively simple. It's, there's an easy form. Once you have hit eight weeks on this PPP loan, you can begin to apply for forgiveness. And then you need to apply for forgiveness within ten months of the end of the covered period. So to clarify some terms that we talked about, seasonal employer is going to be classified as an employer that operates for no more than seven months in a year or has earned no more than one-third of its receipts from any six-month period. Covered period is going to be an eight-week to twenty-four-week covered period that begins once the PPP funds are actually deposited into your bank account, and you need to utilize the funds for the payroll or other eligible expenses during that covered period, so eight to twenty-four weeks. And then again, just to clarify that NAICS code, the accommodation and food services sectors, and that's anyone that provides customers with lodging or preparing meals, snacks, or beverages for immediate consumption. So that's hotels, inns, RV parks, campgrounds, mobile food services, or food trucks, caterers, bars, restaurants, snack bars, cafeterias. Those are all eligible for that three and a half times as opposed to two and a half times. So a couple recaps of the takeaways for the application process. If you've got your PPP through your bank or another lender, I'm not sure that all lenders are going to be doing a second draw. They've changed some rules. So you'll have to check with your lender. We at Prestamo's, we have a whole online process, and we are able to get through the process typically within three to five business days. So it's a pretty quick process. If you want to look on the SBA website, you can look on the SBA website as well and get access to the lender list of those who are going to be doing the PPP and choose from there. The application requirements that you're going to want to come to the table with, you want to make sure that you have all of your payroll documents. So that's going to be a, your nine forty ones that you file quarterly, and then your annual nine forty. You're going to need to show proof if you're, if this is your second draw loan of the twenty-five percent reduction in one quarter of 2020 as compared to 2019. We're not sure exactly how they're, they're going to require that information, if it's going to be bank statements, if it's going to be profit and loss, or if it's just going to be an attestation. But you can do some things in advance by preparing your profit and loss statements or doing your own analysis. And I can give a link to a spreadsheet that we created that's really simple and easy to use just to see if you've had a twenty-five percent reduction. You're going to want to make sure you have your 2019 business tax returns, and especially if you are self-employed and you file a Schedule C because your Schedule C is what will be used to determine whether you're eligible for that owner compensation replacement or not. You want to make sure that you have your business information, so your start date, your Articles of Organization, your EIN, your tax structure, all of that information. Twenty-twenty profit and loss statements and copies of any 1099s that you've received. If you are a 1099 contractor, you receive 1099 income. And then information about anybody that's an owner of the business, and that'll include their personal information, their social security, their address, and you'll need to also have their identification. And then just a reminder that forgiveness is available on both the first round and the second round up to a hundred percent if you use it for at least sixty percent of payroll costs and no more than forty percent of other covered expenses. The eligible employer amount, again, is going to be two and a half times the monthly payroll for the last twelve months for up to the first $100,000 in wages per employee. And for those businesses that fall into the seven-two NAICS code, it'll be three and a half times. If you don't have W-2 employees and you're self-employed and you file the Schedule C, you are eligible to receive owner compensation replacement. It'll be two and a half times the average net profit from your 2019. Maybe it'll be from the 2020 depending on the IRS guidance. But that's your 1040 Schedule C in line thirty-one. If you look at your 2019 taxes and you see that on your Schedule C line thirty-one, you have a negative net profit, and you don't have W-2 wages at this point unless the SBA comes out with some additional guidance, you're not eligible for a PPP loan at this point. And then the idle program has been extended. It originally closed on December thirty-first, 2020. It has been extended through December thirty-first, 2021. And you can apply for both the idle advance and the idle loan, and that's the Economic Injury Disaster Loan directly through the SBA on the SBA website. If you received an idle in the past and you need to increase the amount of the idle, I recommend that you go on to the IRS website and look at the idle FAQs, and there's information about what you need to do in order to increase your idle loan with the SBA. And again, the idle program is directly through the SBA as opposed to the PPP, which is through an eligible lender. So the next steps that you want to prepare and get ready while you're waiting for the IRS and the Treasury to open up the PPP program, you're going to want to pull your January to December 2019 and 2020 bank statements or your profit and loss statements. You want to make sure that you gather all your 2019 and 2020 payroll documents. So we're talking about those quarterly nine forty ones that you file, payroll summary reports. A lot of the major payroll providers like ADP or online providers like Gusto, they have some really nice cares packages, reports that they're printing out that show everything that you need to imply. And then it's helpful for you to get your 2019 and 2020 profit and loss statements by month so you can calculate to see if you have that twenty-five percent reduction. And I will put a link to the spreadsheet we created where you just put in your gross sales by month for 2019 and 2020, and it'll automatically tell you if you've hit that twenty-five percent threshold. And then again, the application, no lender is able to take applications right now unless they're taking pre-applications because the program isn't open. We are hoping to get some guidance from the SBA this week on when the program will be open and some very specific information about these changes in the second draws. You'll be able to apply with your lender. I would make sure that you check in advance with your lender to see if they're going to be doing the next round of PPP. If not, you can go on to the IRS website and find a lender that meets your needs. And again, I'll put the link for us in there. We are doing PPP lending. We did it the first round, and we'll be doing it again. Everything is online, but you can also get access to someone that can walk you through the process as opposed to some of the larger banks where you won't be able to work directly with anybody. This is what the spreadsheet looks like. Again, you just put in This is what the spreadsheet looks like. Again, you just put in whatever your gross sales were and it'll automatically tell you. So I'll link it here at the end when I'm done with the presentation. And then just a couple of bits of information about this new act that came out. So a lot of us have heard about the stimulus payments. It's going to be an up to $600 one-time payment for individuals making up to 75,600 per child. And it's based on the 2019 tax return. The pandemic unemployment was extended through March 14th, 2021, and that's an additional $300 per week. There's a provision about surprise medical billing that prevents patients from surprise billing. And then COVID-19 testing and vaccines, there's some additional report supports there. Some, some additional supports for foster youth. And then some SBA lending enhancements. I saw earlier that there was a question about principal and interest payments being covered by the SBA. We are waiting for the full invite guidance from the SBA, but it looks like for the majority of businesses that have a microloan or a 7A or a 504 loan, that the SBA will be covering three months of principal and interest. And then there was something about severely impacted businesses that would get up to five months. But again, we're waiting for the guidance on that. That's something that, once the SBA issues that guidance, you can talk with your lender about. But I believe that is supposed to start in February 2021. So a note from the SBA, I know everybody's really curious about when this program is going to open, but they're working as quickly as possible. They have to provide accurate information and they have to use the law in order to, to guide their, their guidance to lenders, to business owners. So they're just asking for patients as they work through and they make sure that they get everything right. And then that is it for the presentation. Here's my information. If you have any additional questions that we aren't able to answer today, or if you don't feel comfortable putting your unique circumstances in the main chat, I'm happy to probably via email would be better because my phone's just going off the hook all day long with people asking when the program's going to open. So, but feel free to reach out if you have questions or if you're interested in applying through us once the program opens, there's my information there. And Robert, do we want to go to the Q and A?
Yeah, we'll jump into the Q and A. While we're doing that, I, I will mention, I was on the phone with the SBA last night. And the Arizona District Office is very responsive and they will get the information out as soon as they have it. So you can look for an email from us. We will send it out to all the registered attendees for this session. As soon as we have information and more details from the SBA, we'll get that information out to everybody. So as we jump in to the Q and A, I'm also going to bring in somebody or attendees. I can find out, we've got a lot of attendees, but I'm going to bring in Tom Fulter. He's a, one of our supporters. He's going to talk real briefly about the P and L ones, not P and L, the EIDL. Once we get him on board, but Amber and Carrie Anne, if you want to jump into those Q and As, we can start answering those.
Okay, so I'll answer one question. It says, updates on their new legislation, RE IRS deductions, will this be for all PPP loans? The answer to that is yes. All of the legislation is retroactive. So several times in the actual text of the bill, they said, you know, everything that we're saying here is retroactive to as if it was part of the original CARES Act. So anyone who has not applied for forgiveness yet, you get the benefit of the changes to the forgiveness rules. You know, anyone who has not applied for a loan at all gets the benefit of the changes to the PPP loan rules. So everything is retroactive.
There's a question now, will churches be eligible to apply? The answer to that is yes, churches are eligible. You'll use your W2 wages for payroll in order to get your, your eligible amount.
Okay.
Looks like there's a couple of questions about the percentage of payroll. So the, can I use 100% of the loan for payroll? Yes, you can use it all for payroll. That's actually the best way to use the funds is through payroll. And then if you use 100%, all 100% is forgivable, not just the 60%. That was one of the questions. So if you use 100% for, for payroll expenses, then 100% should be forgivable.
Right. There's a question about, I'm still waiting for the go ahead from my bank to apply for forgiveness. Can we apply for the second PPP before our first one is forgiven? The answer to that is yes. You have 10 months from the end of your covered period to apply for forgiveness. So they're not going to make you wait till that's done. So go ahead and apply for that second one now if you, if you are eligible.
Hey Carrie Anne, a lot of lenders, and I don't know what Prestamo's is doing, but a lot of lenders have asked their clients to withdraw their applications for forgiveness because of the rules and, and said withdraw and reapply. So they can take full advantage of new rules. So definitely check with your lender on what they are doing.
Yeah, we're not asking anybody to, to not, you can move forward with your forgiveness process with us. And it won't impact your ability to apply for a second, second draw.
But one of the requirements on the second draw of PPP is that someone who's received a first draw must have fully utilized or intend to fully utilize. And that's kind of a funny statement and who knows what the SBA will say about that, but yeah.
Yeah, one quick thing, there are people who are still posting questions in the chat. We're not going to answer any questions in the chat. So if you want your question addressed, hopefully go ahead and put it in the Q and A. Cause that's where we're looking for questions. So go ahead, Amber.
Okay, I think there's a question actually for you. You read that the IRS are going to release some, some guidelines.
Okay, so I'd already answered Dave's question.
Okay.
Oh, I think Dave's question was on the EIDL and whether or not it's taxable, the EIDL grant. So remember there's three separate programs. There's the PPP, there's the EIDL Grant Advance, which was up to $10,000, $1,000 per employee. And then there's the EIDL loan. So I think the question was about the EIDL grant. And in the recent legislation, that was made non-taxable, just like the PPP. And then in addition, they clarified that any, whatever you spent it on is deductible. So from a tax perspective, the PPP forgiveness and the EIDL grant are now treated the same.
And Bob, you wanted me to mention something about that. So the EIDL advances were extended only in low income communities. And they've added what they are calling EIDL grants. And to qualify for the grant, you have to have had a 30% decline, not the 25, a 30% decline. And the grant would increase if you got an advance previously of $10,000, you're done. But if let's say you got an advance of 3,000, you can get 7,000 additional on the grant. If you meet those, there are certain requirements to meet those. So that's kind of how the two idle events and grants have moved forward. We also have a question there. I think Amber, you're going to answer it about the forgiven, what mentions the EIDL. So I'll let you go ahead and take that.
Yeah, yeah. The, anybody that has already applied for forgiveness and you've had your determination made and had an idle loan or an idle advance that you've started repayment on. The SBA is supposed to be satisfying that with your lender. So you'll need to talk directly with your lender about getting reimbursed for that because it is retroactive to that first PPP. So talk to your lender directly about, about that.
Also, one thing I want to mention with that question is a lot of people get confused when they're hearing EIDL PPP, EIDL Advance, EIDL, back and forth. The, the economic injury disaster loan is a loan. It's not forgivable. The PPP is the forgivable loan. So if you have an EIDL loan, an economic injury disaster loan, it is not forgivable. It does have terms for repayment. So please keep that in mind. I know a lot of people get confused when they hear both of them, but they are two separate programs.
Yeah, that's a great, great thing to point out.
Looks like there's a answer to the question about the yoga studio, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Cause I think it would be, I think it's a good question for people who are self-employed. So the question is, we're a yoga studio and everyone we employ is a 1099. So in other words, they don't issue any W2s. So if we're only paying ourselves as owners, are we still eligible to apply for a PPP? To get rental assistance? Okay, so that's kind of two questions. So I'm going to guess you either if you, you're probably filing on a Schedule C on your tax return. And anyone who has a Schedule C and their tax return is eligible for this program as long as you have net income. If you're operating at a loss, then you're not eligible. And then it's, are we still eligible to apply for a PPP to get rental assistance? So on the same, on the same thread, if you're a Schedule C person, not really sure how they're going to enforce the whole use of funds because if you don't have any employees, you know, how can they say you're paying 60% of payroll? So the clarification on Schedule C, I think there needs to be some more because it's kind of unclear, but so if you're Schedule C, there's just not a lot of rules out there for you on how you actually use the money. Because you don't actually pay wages. So hopefully that helps on the yoga studio. But if you have a Schedule C, yes, you're eligible. If you are formed as an LLC and you file a partnership return, yes, you're eligible. So hopefully, hopefully that helps that.
Yeah, Carrie Anne, that's a great point because the SBA in the first round had different roles for Schedule C, S corp filers and C corp filers. And that's part of what we're waiting for out of new SBA rules to see how it will apply to various circumstances.
Right.
Gerald's asking a question about the easier PPP forgiveness. We don't have the guidance on what that new simplified process is going to look like yet. I'm really hoping it's just a blanket forgiveness, but right now there is a simplified process for loans that are under 50,000 that you would speak to your, your PPP lender about. But once there's more information about the new simplified process, we'll be able to share that.
Right. Here's a question for not-for-profits. Does gross receipts include charitable contributions and investment income? That question has not been answered yet. The whole concept of what is gross receipts in the bill has not been answered yet. And the, the questions that are out there, A, what does that mean for for-profit and for not-for-profit? Is it cash basis of accounting? Is it accrual basis? Is it what you keep your books on? Is it what you report your tax return on? All of those questions can make a huge difference in whether or not you meet the 25% decline. And so once they come out with guidance, they're going to have to define gross receipts. And my expectation is that they will not adequately define it because they haven't adequately defined anything yet. So I guess just stay tuned and see what we do get.
Yeah, I would think that the gross receipts for a nonprofit would include charitable contributions and investment income because that's how you get operating cash. But I guess we'll have to see about that. The next question is our sales commissions paid out during the period, including in the payroll amount? Yes, anything that's a normal wage bonuses, as long as it doesn't exceed the $100,000 annualized per employee. That can be considered. We already talked about the idle loans. If you have an idle loan, that's completely separate. Even if you have the idle advance, it won't impact moving forward and retroactively. I'm not going to talk about the employee retention tax credits because that's a whole other ballgame. Applying for the second is not contingent on your first. So if you're having trouble applying for forgiveness, you haven't yet applied for forgiveness, your lender's having problems with forgiveness. You can still apply for that second round loan. If you're having problems with your existing lender, you might want to consider moving to a different lender. If you're having those many problems, that might be my recommendation.
All right. There's a question about, should I wait to apply for forgiveness? The only clients we are recommending they wait to apply for forgiveness is if their loan is between 50,000 and 150,000. Waiting for that revised application for loans up to 150 in case it requires less data. But everyone else, we don't really see any reason to wait.
How do restaurants that opened in January 2020 demonstrate year-over-year quarterly drop in revenue to qualify for round two PPP? This is a fantastic question that we just don't have guidance on. So if your business opened up in 2020 and you were in operation in operation by February 15th, 2020. Obviously you're not going to have year-over-year. So we're not really sure how you're going to be able to demonstrate that 25% reduction. So that's one of the things that we're going to be looking for guidance from the SBA on. And if you're going to be eligible, if you started your business in 2020.
There is some, some language in the bill and yes, I asked the SBA about it this morning. That does say if you had zero income in 19, but you had Q1 income in 20. There will be a, a way to compare Q2 to Q1. But beyond that, it's unclear at this moment. And on the SBA, people keep asking me, hey, they have 10 days, that's today. Well, they have 10 days. It wasn't clarified what a day was. And the implementation, their action is actually to present their plan to the small business committee. It's not to present it to the public. So understand that, you know, the 10 days didn't mean that today everything's going to be out. I know it's going to be probably another week before things start really getting out there.
Yeah.
There's a question about the necessity test. That's a really good question and the necessity question was a hot topic in the summer. And then the SBA came out with a safe harbor for loans over two, under 2 million. Ironically, with the new PPP too, the maximum loan amount is 2 million. So what we're waiting on is to see if that initial safe harbor is going to be extended to the PPP two loans, or if there's going to be more clarity on the necessity question. So I'd still wait, I'd say wait to see on that. Cause there's really no good definition. It's like one sentence, but you know, current economic standards make it necessary, blah, blah, blah. It's, it's very unclear.
Yeah. There's a question about independent contractors, again, factoring into the PPP equation. So if you have W2 wages where you withhold taxes and you provide payroll reporting to the IRS and the state. Then you have W2 employees. If you just pay somebody with a check for the full amount and you give them a 1099 at the end of the year. Those 1099 amounts that you pay them aren't considered wages because you're paying them to somebody that's self-employed. Those people that receive a 1099 from you will file their own Schedule C and they're eligible to apply for their own PPP loan. But you can't consider them as either part of your wages for determining how much you're eligible for, and you can't use your PPP funds to pay 1099 contractors.
Amber, there was a, another question around the covered period and you did say this in your presentation. You originally it was eight or 24 weeks, although it was always treated as anytime in between. And it did clarify that in the new bill, it's from eight to 24 weeks, whenever you finish, that's your covered period.
I would just recommend if you are a Schedule C filer and you're using your, your Schedule C to determine eligibility for owner compensation replacement. You'll need to wait at least 10 weeks. Otherwise you won't be eligible for the full forgiveness amount. So in, in order to just keep it simple, if you're a 10, a Schedule C filer, don't apply for forgiveness and use your covered period of 10 weeks to mourn.
Well, here's a complicated one. Carolyn, again, what if an organization reduced FTEs and wages of more than 25% after their round one period? Can you clarify the FTE reduction limit? Of 25% is still in effect for around two and is the comparison period similar? So Carolyn, I'm kind of waiting on the answer to this question too. So there's nothing in this, the text of this new bill that changes the base periods. So there's nothing that says, you know, now that we're giving you a loan for the first, you know, you're going to get a loan in the first quarter of 2021. It doesn't change that I've seen the base representation. So like for the 25% wage reduction test, it appears that you still have to compare whatever wages you're paying to the first quarter of 2020. For the FTE reduction test, it appears that the, the base periods are still that 2019 base period and the January, February 2020 base period. There was no real changes to the forgiveness rules other than the addition of those four new categories for expenses. So it'll be interesting to see if that changes when they come out with the interim fund regulations or not. But it's an excellent question.
I'm going to do two in one here. So for the 25% reduction in the quarter, does it need to be the standard quarter? It can be any three months consecutively. It appears that it needs to be based on a standard quarter and not, not three months, but we'll wait for some more guidance there. And then as you're figuring your quarterly income, your previous PPP but we'll wait for some more guidance there. And then as you're figuring your quarterly income, your previous PPP or your forgivable idle grant are not considered part of your gross revenue.
Okay. Um, okay, if you received a loan under the first offering, can you use the same application information, i.e. payroll support for the second application? The answer is yes. Um, you can, once again, use your twenty nineteen average payroll as your base for the computation. There's also a provision that allows you to use, uh, any twelve-month period preceding your application. So, um, if you were a new business in twenty twenty, then you would use, you know, the twelve months prior to when you apply, or if you started your business at the end of nineteen, um, there are rules that allow you to use a different twelve-month period if that would benefit you more. Um, but yeah, you can just pull that stuff out of the drawer and use it again.
Yeah, if you're looking at your twenty nineteen versus twenty twenty, I would think that the majority of businesses had more payroll in twenty nineteen, unless you were a new business, um, because most businesses were operating at less capacity. So it's probably going to be more beneficial for you to use the twenty nineteen numbers to get a higher amount of PPP. There's another question about, um, expanding on owner compensation. So if you are self-employed and you file a Schedule C, then you can use your net profit on line thirty-one of your Schedule C. You would divide it by twelve and multiply it by two and a half, and that would be your eligibility for your PPP. And that's considered owner compensation replacement. And you can basically just pay yourself in draws, you can use it for your normal operating expenses. You don't have to follow the same guidelines as that sixty forty split with the payroll and other eligible expenses because it's owner compensation to you and you as a Schedule C filer aren't separate from your business technically from a tax standpoint.
And Amber, that was a lot of confusion in the first round. Um, a lot of people who filed as an S corp thought they were self-employed and in the, uh, views of this program, the IRS, you're not. You have to actually be a Schedule C filer.
Right, if you are filing in, as an S corp with an eleven twenty S, then the only way for you to be eligible for a PPP loan is if you pay W two wages to yourself or other employees. And then if you file a ten sixty-five, uh, partnership, if you had W two wages, those are eligible. And then you can use positive, um, income from your K one, line fourteen, I believe it is. If there's positive number there, then that counts as your, your owner payroll. Um, so there's, there's different, based on how you file your taxes, there's some different rules. And whatever lender you choose should be able to help you clarify what you're eligible for.
And we should mention before we run out of time that the current, uh, bill states that the deadline for PPP two will be March thirty-first. That means the SBA has issued a loan number, not an application deadline, right? Um, now, of course, there were deadlines previously and those were changed. And so that could happen again. But that is the current deadline. And Bob, at some point, when there is more information on the shuttered venue grant, that specifically applies to um, entertainment makes seventy-one, um, perhaps that's a different program we do. But just for those people that might be considering that, I believe if you get a shuttered venue grant, you cannot get a second draw on PPP.
Correct. I think actually if you're eligible for the shuttered venue grant, you're not even eligible for a PPP. Um, so there's a lot of confusion that needs to be answered there.
Yeah, I, I think you might be right. No, I was hesitant to say that part.
Um, there's a question about if, uh, I, I lost it, but if, if you applied with one lender the first time around and you had a difficult time, um, or you want to switch lenders or your lender's not doing PPP this round, there's no reason why you can't go with another lender. It doesn't matter. You know, it's up to you who you use for your second draw. It could be easier to go with your first lender, but it, you know, it's up to you what you want to do. These are two completely separate loans, um, the PPP loans. So if you look at it that way, it might make it easier for you. There are a lot of questions.
Are a lot of questions I'm trying to like.
And a lot of them can't be answered quite yet.
Yeah, if you've already received an idle advance, um, you can't apply again for another advance as far as I know.
Well, if you are in one of the, there's about fifteen makes codes groups, um, and can demonstrate a thirty percent reduction and did not get the full ten thousand, you can apply for an idle grant to bridge you to ten thousand. There's lots of ifs limitations there.
Somebody put in the question box at the SBA email to ask for a second draw on the idol or to increase. They gave an email. I don't know if this is true or not, but I'll put it in there for anybody that.
Yeah, Amber, I posted in the chat the link to the FAQs for the EIDL. In those FAQs, FAQs has the information on requesting an increase. It's not a second draw, but it's an increase on your original EIDL loan. There's, there's a process there, um, that's important. Um, I'm also going to answer one of the questions, uh, in the Q and A. Um, is, there is, the EIDL is not forgivable. Um, so there's no new data on forgiveness for it. It's, it's not a forgivable loan. It is a loan with a thirty-year term that can be paid back uh, early if you wish, but it's a thirty-year term at three point seven five percent interest.
We're getting, I know we're butting up on time and putting my email in here again. You can feel free to email me. I've already started. I can see them popping up. I'm getting a lot of questions. So if it takes a few days to get back to you and you do email me, please just be patient and not forgetting about you.
Right. One thing I would suggest is, at the beginning, Robert tells you that all of, um, the previous bootcamp, um, presentations are archived. So I know I've presented like five or six, and I know Amber has presented some all on the PPP. If you're kind of new to the process and you're just kind of getting into what does forgiveness mean? What are these concepts? What is an FTE? Was all, what's all this stuff they're talking about? I would recommend going back and re, and listening to those, um, sessions because back when we started, and I don't know when the first one was, maybe June, Robert, you can refresh my memory. But the ones in June were very basic and very nuts and bolts, defining all the terms. Here's how this works. Here's how that works. And then as the sessions progressed, the subsequent sessions built upon the knowledge that we gave out in the previous session. So I think if you go back and go through those, it'll really help you understand the program. Um, because it's kind of hard in a session like this to talk about the basics and, and the more complicated stuff and the new stuff and the old stuff. So, um, I think that'd be really a good use of time for you.
Yeah, that's a really great suggestion. And then we'll also, we were talking about scheduling some additional sessions. Um, we're all waiting for guidance from the SBA and as, as Tom and Robert, I believe, mentioned, the SBA has time to do that. You know, as of today, they needed to come up with a plan that they were going to present to the small business committee, but it doesn't necessarily mean that those are guidance that's going to be distributed today. Obviously, we would love it and you guys would love it if that information would come out, you know, today, tomorrow, the next couple of days. But there's, there's, we really don't have an idea when it's going to come out. Um, but I promise you that we will all be giving you information as soon as you are, you are able to apply. We are just as anxious as, as everybody else is.
Yeah, so with that, Amber, um, we have scheduled for all those, uh, that want to make a note of this, Thursday, January twenty eighth. Um, on one of our regular bootcamp sessions, we had, we have scheduled a PPP session. Um, and we will also have one, a special session scheduled at some point before that. Um, either a week from today, but most likely two weeks from today, uh, to make sure we have all the rulings and all the processes and some of the additional questions that will get answered by the SBA in that timeframe. Um, but yes, we will have some additional PPP, uh, sessions to help answer questions and provide any information from the SBA that we receive. Um, so you will get emails, uh, from the ACA with those dates as we get those finalized. Um, but we will definitely have some more updated sessions as we get more information.
We do events all the time as well, so you can look out for, um, we'll probably do something next week as well. I'll put the link just for our events. I don't have anything up right now, but if you check back later today, I'll add a session for next week as well. And hopefully by then, this, we would have some, you know, additional information issued. But my whole entire job is to educate small businesses and the topic right now is PPP. So that's basically all I'm doing in life.
Um, one additional resource that is available to all small business owners out there that can help, uh, with the PPP, especially if you're getting one for the first time, is the Small Business Development Centers. Um, you can find them at azsbdc.net is their website. They're located throughout the state. Uh, housed in every community college throughout the state, and they are a no-cost resource. They're funded by the SBA, uh, you know, part of their job is to make sure they're on top of the SBA information as well. Um, I work very closely with them and they're a tremendous resource. So you can reach out to them in, in your local communities and, and help get some additional, support as you're applying for a PPP loan. Um, with that, it looks like we're up in time. I want to thank, uh, Amber for the presentation and also Carrie Anne and Tom for helping answer the questions. Um, we appreciate their support. They've all been very supportive of the bootcamps, uh, throughout the past year and into this year. So we're excited to have them with us and, and partners with us. Um, again, we will update everyone via emails, uh, with the upcoming PPP sessions as we get those scheduled. You can also look at the other bootcamp sessions on our bootcamp website. Uh, we get those listed a couple of weeks in advance. And we have a great session on planning tomorrow. So hopefully you can make it. Um, until then, we will, uh, look to see you tomorrow and everybody have a great day and we will talk to you soon. Thank you.
Hi, thank you.
Thanks, Robert.